Assistant to the Mayor, Mr. Charlie Cooper, would you say our prayer tonight, please?
Father God, we thank you, Lord, again for this opportunity to come together, Lord, to do your business and do the county's business, Father God. But everything that's said or done here tonight be according to your will. Father God, be found pleasing to you, Lord. Be with our community, be with our families, Lord. Be with all the people around the world and all that are in need, Father God. Meet those needs, Father, in Jesus' name and prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Preston, would you lead the pledge?
I will. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Gary Carth. We'll have a call on Anthony Fraser. Next is the approval of the agenda. There's a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Price. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Number two is the citizens forum. Okay, we don't have anybody that's signed up. Next is number four is our county mayor attorney and finance advisor invited guest speakers. I'm going to let the mayor introduce a couple of speakers, please.
I'd like to ask him if Jeff Couples, if he has to come up, he's got something he wants to discuss with the commission, really made that statement. He's got a temper, if you want to come up, you can come with him.
I did, didn't. We'll go back to that. Okay, y'all come on up.
Good evening. I'm so glad to see you all and to be able to make this announcement. We have been about eighteen months in negotiations. And this afternoon, we got an email from Jeff Couples, that Couples J&amp;J out of Jackson has lost a time building. And they are locating an operation at the industrial park. Yay! Yeah, we're gonna let Jeff tell you just a minute about what he does and the part of his operation that he's gonna bring you into the industrial park. This is Lee Davis, she's his financial advisor.
Yeah, so what we're looking at doing is, we're a job shop. We've got about three hundred and fifty people. We do specialty in production machining, specialty in production fabrication, robotic welding, as well as some field industrial services. Mainly what we're looking at bringing to the Camden area is production fabrication with some production machining and robotic welding support. Our customer base that would be doing work for here, more than likely would be Kubota and Caterpillar and even some Cub Cadet stuff up in Martin, Tennessee. They're part of Stanley Black and Decker now, so that's national. Appreciate you guys letting us move into the community. I've had a house on Beaver Dam for about seven years. Just kind of been keeping an eye on it. It looked like a good community to settle the business into. This will be our third location. The main offices is Jackson. We have one in Dyersburg, Tennessee. We have about sixty-two people there, a restaurant in Jackson. So we're looking at probably having about fifty here within the next couple of years and then possibly expand that maybe up to a hundred within five. That's what I'm looking at.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Everybody remember the unnamed person in Resolution Number Thirty-One. It's Mr. J&amp;J. So we need y'all to vote for that to make sure this happens.
Judge Bradberry? Would you approach, please?
I'm sure we'll. I usually don't want to say that. But I'll be happy to. How are you?
Thank you.
I guess the floor is mine.
It is your.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brett Bradberry. I'm your Circuit Court Judge for Part One of the Twenty-Fourth Judicial District. Judge Griffey's sitting here in Benton County right now, but I've been here, I sat here the first year I was on stage before Judge Griffey was elected. We did some swat around the counties. I'm here tonight to ask you all to support our recovery court. I know Mr. Addison and Mr. Smith were here at a previous meeting. And if I say anything that's implicative, I apologize, but I'll certainly be here to field some questions when I'm done. What a recovery court will offer this community is an alternative to placing individuals in jail, placing in T D L C custody or in county jail. Our hope is to help high-need, high-risk drug addicts that are continually coming through these doors and many times in cuffs to see the judges that sit here in Benton County to try to help them break their habit of crime and their addiction. It's a long-term program that will last about eighteen to twenty-four months. It will be highly supervised, more intensely supervised than regular probation. These gentlemen that are sitting in the front row with us are my two directors. I've got two different courts, one in the north and one in the south of the judicial district. They'll drug test these offenders multiple times per week. They'll be required to attend N A and A A Bs. They will attend classes with the directors as they progress through these programs. So it's a multifaceted attack on the addictions that people in Benton County are facing, people that our judicial district are facing. I'm sure you're all aware of the drug problems that we have. And this type of program, it's not your typical pre-ham program, okay? We're not sending, well, we say it this way. We're gonna send them off initially for thirty to ninety days on an intensive impatience program. When they come out of that, then they'll come into the recovery court program where we will monitor them weekly at least until they earn the right to have less and less restrictions as time goes on. What am I missing here that I didn't really push, guys? I got thumbs up on him, so that's not, can't be too bad from that perspective. One of the signature parts of this program is me. There are no programs in our criminal justice system where the judge is involved in these people's lives. I come once a month, twice a month, and meet with them for three to five minutes, one on one, and encourage them, find out how their life's going, find out what obstacles that they're facing that we might be able to help them overcome their addiction. It's a circumstance where judges across the state do it differently. But it's not where I come and sit in that chair in black robe. I come and sit in this chair right across from them. Eye to eye, man to man, a woman to woman, and have a hard-to-hard talk with them, see another lifestyle. So that differentiates this type of a program from the normal problems that you might hear about. Until we get started June one, May one, roughly, May one of this year is when we started the recovery courts. So we're in the interim stages. We've only got three active participants out of Hardin County. We've only got one through so far for the three-county Benton, Carroll, Henry portion of the court. We've got a multitude of applications that are coming through the pipeline. What I was gonna say is, when May one came around, this judicial district made the final judicial district in the state of Tennessee. We're the only one in the state that had no recovery courts. So now we're uniting the state, Department of Mental Health and Human Services, the ability to say our entire state now has program offerings for the recovery courts. And I think the numbers are right around twenty-two thousand dollars. And this is coming from your opioid reimbursement funds. This is not coming, I'm not asking for money for your raised taxes or getting funds from other places. The opioid reimbursement funds, a specific, one of the six divisions that you can spend that money is recovery. And I hope that you'll consider supporting our courts. I will say, all the other five counties that have completed and passed resolutions giving the funds that we requested, I did it by percentage. Let's just use a ballpark here. Let's say our entire judicial district got five hundred thousand dollars. I'm asking, and the way our budget worked out, I needed about twenty percent of that, about a hundred thousand dollars. So whatever percentage that county got out of that five hundred thousand is what I'm asking for from Benton County. For instance, I think it's twenty-two thousand from you all. I got sixty-eight thousand from Henry County, Carroll County, and seventy-two thousand from the other. So it's a proportionate thing. I'm not asking for a flat rate. Maurice County, this league population will detect the services that we can provide. So I'm here to answer your questions. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Judge Bradberry?
Yes, sir.
I do have some long questions to ask. And one of the things I'm passionate about is people paying their debt to society. Let's say someone is arrested, convicted on charges of dealing drugs. Most of the time, they start out as users, then they deal till they can support addicts and have to enroll. So they go before Judge Griffey, they're sentenced to, let's say, three years. Is there a part of this recovery where they are incarcerated and recovering? I think people should be paying their debt to society. I'm not against the concept. I think it's great, but I think it's how you're really looking at paying their debt. If you want them in jail, then this problem's not in that. We're gonna give them a very small amount of jail time on the front end, and then we're going to be highly supervising the rest of that period of time. Let me say this, a three-year sentence will be a very small sentence in this case. Most of these folks are gonna have six to eight-year sentences. And this two-year program will be on the front end. But then they'll be on regular probation on the back end. So specifically, a small amount of jail time on the front, high amount of supervision during our program. We haven't gotten to the point where we're gonna offer aftercare yet, but that's in our plan. So there's a mental program after they graduate that we can keep an eye on, so to speak, from a recovery court standpoint. But they're in our program. They're not doing drugs. They're not committing crimes. We make, all of our employees, unless they're on A I S, or they have any disability or something for some reason, they're gonna be required to pay off all their court costs and fines. We're gonna highly encourage family reintegration, payments of child support, and again, paying their debt to society. We can't put everybody in prison for that. If we can monitor these folks and have them pay their share, literally, court costs, fines, child support, other things, spending their, earning a living in the community. So that means they're buying goods and services in the community as well. Can you touch on another thing? Drug payers. We don't take drug payers in recovery court. And the first step of the program is to go through the application process. It's gotta come through the district attorney's office. If the DA's office and law enforcement says this guy's been swinging in Benton County for twenty years, that's not the person we're after, or after his customer. That might be selling a little bit to support their habit, right? That doesn't mean here now. But the words we use is we don't put the box at the end of the house, right? We'll put a drug dealer in with his hands. So we're never gonna do that personally. Hope I asked your question.
It is yours, it says right there. I'm a lecturer, another program.
I'm sure that, well, we've tried to take the best of the programs from around the state. I have a history with the Twenty-seventh Judicial District, which is Waverly and Alana Counties to the west of, northwest. And their success rate is around fifty percent. But that is a very high percentage. And here's the other thing, we've got to have a certain amount of success rate where the state won't continue to fund our programs. This is partially state-funded as well. We get grants, we don't sign grants on a matching thing. It's funds that are out there that we contract with the state's Department of Mental Health and Human Services. That's part of this. We're asking the counties to fund a part of it. There's another thing I want to touch on, and that's what we call it, drug court fund, drug court fee. There's a drug court fee that historically has gone directly to the Department of Mental Health and Human Services because we had no recovery court. It was monies that were collected in the courts that the state took because we didn't have, it's about four, five thousand dollars per county per year. So it's not a lot of money. But now, we need to hold that money back and keep that for our recovery courts.
Yep.
What happens if they re-offend, Father God, and this? Do they finish their jail time with this state in the program, or what?
It's gonna be a case-by-case basis. Re-offending is a big check mark in the bad house, okay? We just have to take it at a case-by-case basis. You know, I don't, we violate someone's probation if they're driving on a remote license, okay? To me, that's not a reason to kick them out of recovery court. Personal basis, personal opinion. But think about, when they chop up at Walmart, when they break into somebody's house, there's a very high likelihood that they will be out of our program. We're not gonna kick somebody out of the program for failing the drug screen. I want them to know that. But they're addicts, they're going to mess up. And we're gonna be there trying to catch them and lift them back up. I heard, yes, sir?
After they get off the three or four-month intense course that they're in and get released from that, where do they go back to be out?
It's a great question. We would like to have some sort of structured housing for them, but we don't have that here right now. Right now, they're gonna have to live on their own, they'll be living in the community. We're gonna try to give them the tools to separate from that crowd they've been running with. But at this stage, they're gonna have to go back home. Yes, sir?
I caught a tail end of a block or something the other day. And something says about having a therapist come to jail or something of that nature. Is part of that program?
It's not, but I think the sheriff's department's doing that. That's something they offer sometimes, sheriff might be able to push on that, so.
I thought I kind of found that one. This is a great thing to, really, if I can do them this. But you said something maybe about you got grants or some money that would pay for therapists.
The same opioid money.
You'd say that?
Have a therapist come in and help you.
And then you have control of them there.
Dwayne, if I may, Mr. Bradberry's asking for about eighteen or twenty percent of the opioid money. So Mr. Christopher's asking for a percentage of that opioid money to go there too for that. I agree, it sounds like a good program.
This is Tom Turner, I'm your mate, Chris Smith, and Josh Addison, my two directors. Josh is over in my recovery court in Savannah right now personally running along here. Back to the housing. So wherever they're staying, they have, there's an understanding with them as well that we can come in at any time of the day or night to look through anything in their house, to drug screen them at any point, even the people that they live with, even the people that they live with. And also, to your question, we do have behavioral health specialists on our team. And what they do, look on in, I spoke to a gentleman who's read the opinion about this, regardless if these individuals that apply for the recovery court, if they, if the determination is a no, those individuals that are still incarcerated still have access to behavioral health resources, even if they're incarcerated, free. Do I have another question? Thank you, sir. Mayor, thank you for your time. Hope you all will consider supporting recovery court.
Judge Bradberry?
Yes, ma'am.
There's a lady from our local newspaper. She raised her hand a few minutes ago.
All right.
Could you touch a little bit on what I was gonna ask? What is, what kind of data is there from other counties or other locales where these kind of programs have operated in terms of reducing criminal prosecutors?
That data is out there just in the raw tonight, or?
You mentioned your local county had fifty percent, which as you said. I don't know if I'm right here.
I've been out there inside a year. That's what my manager said.
Right. But I mean, in addition, what's helping the individuals themselves to go through and be to, help reduce crime, despite the crisis?
Absolutely. It's a process of, and right, and back to the asking. Thank you for the question. Sequoia. Remind us. We'll get some say. Anything else? Yes, sir?
I've been involved in probation visits in various counties. At what point during this time, if they feel the root is, according to the place that they've ever heard that, that they may have full revocation of their sentence? We did a lot of this for many probation.
Yes, sir?
People go to the pre-ham, the program, a lot of them work good, a lot of times seem like as they see their people serving jail time, they run off pre-ham, pre-ham open, and they don't have to.
I understand.
At what point, I mean, with the recovery court, will they be revocation of their sentence and then have to serve a full sentence?
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be on a case-by-case basis. I guess we talked earlier, committing another crime is not very wise in their circumstances. Failing a drug screen, we will listen to their story. Did the grandmother that raised them from birth pass away? And they had some sort of extreme experience in their life that caused them to make a stupid decision, go out and get high? Or was it, you know what, I screwed up, I went to the bar, met one of my old buddies, and we stayed out for three days? That's a different scenario. Two completely different scenarios for failing a drug screen in my life. I can't give you a firm answer. The recovery court team, we've got about six individuals that are part of the team that we hear weekly how these offenders are doing. Are they passing other drug screens? Are they working? Are they beating the curfew requirements? And when someone messes up, we'll sanction them first, okay? It might be, instead of a ten o'clock curfew for the next eight weeks, you're gonna have an eight o'clock curfew. It could be, instead of two drug screens a week, now we're going forward. We're gonna make sure you're not usually in that respect. Whatever the team would decide for those minor-level sanction-type things. Obviously, if somebody commits a crime, they're gonna go back to a judge. The judge will make a decision on board vacation or not.
Oh, this money tends to be announced, of course. Some of our thoughts is to have in-house counseling to get to rehab. If they can't get over the drug, they're supposed to. And while they're serving their sentence, you know, they're eleven, twenty-nine, and they serve seventy-five percent of that. And then while they're in jail, we have counselor, that money, we have a counselor. It may be missing violence, it may be drugs, it may be a little bit of everything. But since that money come up, we've had several rehabs that has come to some of those actions as part of this one. Everybody's got their hands up. And being involved in it for twenty, some odd years that I've been involved in different businesses, devil's criminal justice system, there've been some good cases that went to rehab and come back. And there've been some of these people that, people that.
Yes, sir.
One, you know, about, you know, being a face-based rehabist, you know. And I went back to that drug screen, 'cause I found Jesus on the jailhouse. Maybe where they have to find that. But it's just one of the hard decisions that we have to make. This is, have their hand up and give it to this one. I'm sure the court will do a good job. I know we do a good job together. And I think you do a good job of this too. It's just kind of play out. You often be out here with your hands out, and we're not gonna have that money. Is this for one year, or you said it might be a twenty-four-month program for them?
Well, this is a twenty-four-month program. Now, I'm just saying what the other counties have done, okay? The other counties have done, because we know these funds are here this year, and we know they're getting the same amount next year. Is that my correct, Mayor? Something along those.
There's been a little hiccup in that. One or two of the companies that initially agreed to that have filed another suit. So it's not incongruent of what we will be receiving until that's settled.
Okay.
When we first talked, they said it was gonna be X amount for the next eighteen to twenty years.
Right.
And that's what we were going off of. But I just learned this week that we may not receive the full amount of funds that we thought we were going to this year until that's settled.
All right, well, besides that, what I was just gonna share is what the other counties have done. And they've done it for two years. They've given, whatever the number is, twenty-two thousand for fiscal year now and fiscal year next year to be reevaluated after we know more two years from now. Both of them, what this program's doing, and what kind of opioid funds will happen.
Do you think that Benton County might be able to?
Good question. We're gonna try to, we're gonna put a cap and limit on this. That's another thing. We're not talking about fifty, sixty people right now. We're talking about two or three a year added, okay? So if we have, if we have four by the end of this year of Benton County alone, that's probably a good number. Three to four from each of the three counties. And then we'll grow from there if we're successful with it. And if we can show that to all the five county commissions, who knows, maybe next year we are asking for more opioid reimbursement. If we show that we're successful.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Bradberry. Next, I'd like to introduce Tim Helton, and he's with the Sequoia Group.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, being a legislative body. I'm Tim Helton with Sequoia Group slash One Digital. And this is my partner, Mike Haynes. We had the opportunity last week to speak with Insurance Committee, and they wanted us to come in today. So if you will, if you'll turn to your pamphlet right there at your desk, we're gonna run through that real quick. And I promise you, we're gonna be, we're gonna be quick to the point. I've had the endorsement of the Association of County Mayors on benefits programs since 2006. And one of the reasons I handpicked Mike Haynes. And one of the reasons I handpicked Mike Haynes here is that he's had the endorsement of the Tennessee State Employees Association for many, many years also. That would be some of the prisons and state highway patrol guys and, and all those state employees there. So if you turn around and you're looking at the objectives here, when I first met, um, Mayor Ward, one of the first questions out his mouth was, is that, uh, can you save us money? So remember that question there, can you save us money? So we could call that the, um, the title of this agenda here. So if you look at it real quick, we'll run through the Benton County government, One Digital partnership objectives. A partnership, we all know what's happening in the state of Tennessee with the birth of this state. And then with Blue Oak will come in, uh, on, uh, in western Tennessee. And then how's that gonna impact Benton County and, and the county and the other counties around here? So how are we gonna recruit, hire, train, and entertain our employees? So if you look at it from a partnership objectives, the three things that we're gonna talk about here tonight is better benefits, better costs, and partnership. And then we'll look at cost-saving strategies and ideas, and then questions and next steps. Turn over to the next page there. I'm not gonna read everything, but at the end of the day, in a rural county like Benton County, and with limited resources and everything, Mayor acting a couple of different roles there, him and Charlie holding down an office there. If you look at all those things there, that, that they, that are benefits and HR team and county government does on a daily basis, there's three things that they have to do. And that's the administration, communication, and the compliance for all those employees and all those benefits. And when I say employees, I'm just not meaning employees. I'm talking about employees and all their loved ones, and these are folks that you go to church with, that you play ball with, born and raised in this town. So, uh, you look at all those different things, uh, we have all those capabilities here in this state. Around seventy-five people in Nashville, another ten or twelve in, in Memphis, and another ten or twelve in Knoxville. So, uh, we're very proud of being from the volunteer state. So administration, communication, and compliance. I was talking to Mayor, when we first started this conversation and this relationship, I said, "Mayor, how are you currently managing rising healthcare costs?" He said, "Well, about sixty days, ninety to sixty days before our renewal, our broker comes in and gives us a twenty percent increase." And at that point, how do you manage it? You cut the benefits so you can cut the costs. And we come from a standpoint is that we wanna make sure for those employees, they can afford it, to pay for it, and they can afford to use it. So how are you currently gonna manage these rising healthcare costs with everything that's going on in, in this great state of Tennessee, in Benton County? So if you look the next section here, cost containment and reduction strategy. Might be what was a couple of bits up there.
So, on the page there that Tim just mentioned, uh, these are just a couple of ideas that have been tried and true across the state and different county governments, and level funding. What that simply means is, what if we gave you an insurance plan that after the end of the month, that you could see, I've spent X in premiums, and I've actually spent Y in, uh, claims dollars. And at the end of the year, that would be trued up in the facet of, if there's a surplus there, then the county would receive money's back. So let's just do an easy math. Let's just say that you spent five hundred thousand dollars over the course of a year in health insurance premiums, and you spent four hundred thousand in claims. What happens is that hundred thousand today, that goes to the insurance company, United Healthcare in this example. But what if we put you in a platform that would give you that money back to the county? That's one example of how we think differently, how we help the counties. Uh, obviously, there's some devil of detail, but there's no losing on your side. That flat fee, that five hundred thousand or whatever that number was, just using that for example, there would not be any overage of that, there's not any running claims under that. The other thing is ancillary purchasing power, ancillary being life and disability and dental and vision. We couple that with all the companies that we have across the state and across the US to, to hopefully drive lower costs, so we can really guarantee you that those products we can bring at extremely good value for your associates and the county. Short-term disability, life insurance, dental being examples of that. We're bringing a lot more volume to the table because we're currently having about four thousand employees nationwide. As Tim mentioned, a little over a hundred here in Tennessee. Telehealth and understanding that, when COVID hit, uh, this was kind of a foreign concept, but we've got products that, as your associates, as regardless of what department they're working in, they would have access to twenty-four hour, seven day a week care through telehealth, which includes mental health and substance abuse, uh, at zero copay to the associate. Uh, RX Intervention, uh, when I first started the business twenty-five years ago, about fifteen, eighteen percent of your medical spend was for pharmacy. Now that's crowding up toward thirty percent. How are we managing that? Uh, if we went home right now, I can guarantee you about every third commercial, some pharmacy advertiser, how are we managing those costs more specialty pharmacy if they continue to grow? So that number is something that we would attack, and we would bring a pharmacist to the table when you're, you have to negotiate that now. And then the final thing, and these are just examples of how we get engaged in the local county governments, is bringing a Medicare specialist to help manage those folks that are in that sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five area, and helping them understand what Medicare does and what it doesn't do, so that they're prudent in making a decision, hopefully to get on the plan or off the plan, if that's applicable to them. We have seen a tremendous cost savings there. And we will include, if we've got someone locally identified here in Benton County that, hey, is an expert in that arena, hey, come join our team and, and help us mitigate those costs for you. So those are just three or four or five examples of, those are tried and true, those have, have been successful in other counties in Tennessee. The next sheet is there, you can see from, uh, the baby boomers all the way to the Tennessee. All we're trying to illustrate there is we have to communicate to folks in different ways. From the baby boomers, hey, I want to, you walk me through the information, I want to hand, you know, handouts like I've got my hand in the oven all the way to the other extreme, send me an app, let me figure it out online. So we are prepared and have a communications team that can accommodate and facilitate that. And then the final thing I want to say is on page seven, or slide seven, you can see that when you spend a healthcare dollar, that a bucket of that, sixty-eight percent in this illustration, goes to medical claims. And then we showed that seventeen percent in, in the pharmacy, that's how much of that dollar is going for spending. And then the fixed costs, which are about fifteen percent, are the stock loss, and those way high claims, et cetera. So just understanding that every penny of every dollar, how that it's actually being allocated, and for what resource is that even due for?
If you'll notice, I, I asked you a question there in the beginning. Mayor asked me, can you save us money? There's an email that was put in your packet there. If you haven't had a chance to read that email, sometimes at night or in the morning, coffee, and if you're having quite time with your husband or father, read that email. That email was from Dana Gibson at Murray County. She became a relationship through the Association of County Mayors of ours in two thousand and eleven. That email that I provided to Mayor Ward was written just a couple of months ago. And that's what you call a relationship. That's what you call a partnership. And they asked me the same question. And I'm telling them, I, I'll give you all the same answer that I'm, that I gave her. Yes. And here it is. If you look at these things right here, Mayor, I don't think that you've ever had it all laid out in a county basis of how we get to that savings. Not just savings. It's gotta be a great benefit because we know, Sheriff, that your employees don't come to work for the county for the paycheck. It's for the benefits, and that's what they wanna do. My brother was an educator for forty-one years, and not essentially, he wasn't there because of the money. Okay? So the benefits have to be there. And you don't stay in a relationship for that many years and not be doing something right. Let me give you some numbers. These are your counterparts, Madam Chairman. Murray County, there were three hundred employees when we took them, and five hundred down. They're renewable, three percent. No benefit change, Rocky, not one. Carter County, upper end of the state, very poor county, beautiful county, I'd get this up there. Five percent. They have a five hundred dollar deductible on thirteen hundred dollar out of five matters, with a drug card and offices. Union County, I'm Jed Atkins, had that one since two thousand and eleven, zero. No benefits changed. Marshall County on the way over, we got the call.
Literally driving over.
Look, I'll split shit. They wanted nine. Would y'all have taken nine? In a heartbeat, my county employees can't take nine. Gas is too high, food is too high. And I'm a housing project kid, single mom, so we got five. No change of benefits. Okay? We protect the penny, we protect the paycheck, and can we save you many money, Mayor? Don't worry about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Any questions?
What's the average savings?
Average savings? I would say that our highest, uh, that we've had in the past six years, we come in at about ninety percent. That was the most of them. We took Marshall County off the state point in three years ago, this is the third year. First year when we brought them off the state, we saved them right at two hundred thousand dollars. They were nine percent, nine percent, and we got five this year. But it's usually single digits, because really, just from where I come from, it's gotta be zero, and that's where I just hope to try to get to is zero. But I can get you those data if you need that under right back here. But the other thing, on your ancillary product, personally, is there somewhere between twenty percent on those of benefits that the employees are on? It smells like shamir. Guys, we don't actually do anything drastic. This is what we do on a daily basis. Okay? Any other questions?
I have one of those far.
Yep, yes, please.
I met Mr. Hilton through the Association of County Mayors. The Association of County Mayors endorses this company, and you're seeing most of the counties in Tennessee, or a lot of them, move this way just because it's, they keep it level. You don't see the big twenty percent increases like we see when we're shopping it back and forth. So I just felt like it was my obligation to get them to come to y'all and let you know this is available. I don't know if y'all realized it or not, but when you're going through a budget and all these different things are piled on you, thirty, sixty, ninety days before the budget has to be approved, it, that's the reason I had them to come now, so y'all can study this and see what we want to do. Because you're not, you're kind of forced into it, uh, the contract with the people that you're in when you don't have time to shop it. And when you start the budget process, you don't have time to shop the ambulance service, health insurance, uh, bunch of different things. There's just so much at that time going on. So I appreciate you, Mr. Hilton, for coming and giving these, uh, guys some information.
Thank you very much. Just one other quick thing. I was on the phone with Charlie Curtis today, the executive director of County Commissioners Association. I've been talking to Charlie for many years, okay? Let me tell you guys, ladies, hello, okay? But that's the game plan there. You notice it starts right off the bat, and it's very in-depth, in detail, with the mayor, his staff, Charlie, and everybody else. Okay? Any other questions? Have a blessed night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're going to back up now to the commissioners forum. Who would like to go first? Commissioner Preston.
Thank you, Chairman. Subject might be a little what, little somewhat sensitive, but I promise you it's official. My research comes from several telephone calls, several mayor offices, and a few sheriff offices. Henry County, across the board, when I say across the board, I mean including everybody under the sheriff and everybody in the jail, got a four percent cost of living increase this year. Humphreys County, the county to our east, a four percent cost of living for all Humphreys County workers, three dollars an hour for everybody under the sheriff and everybody at the jail. We seem to think we gotta pass a budget in May. They passed their budget July the twenty-fourth. Carroll County, two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars to each and every county employee, including everybody under the sheriff, everybody under the jail. Somebody making thirty thousand dollars a year, that's about seven point two percent cost of living increase. Decatur County, just south of us, a six percent cost of living increase. Weekly County, and this was passed July the thirty-first, a ten percent cost of living increase for every county worker in that county. Information from the sheriff, everybody under the sheriff, everybody in the jail, received between six and seven thousand dollars for one-year raise. He offered to be more detailed, I told him that's enough, stop there. What had happened? Weekly County has nine schools. Four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars appropriated for, uh, resource officers from schools. Weekly County found out the state was gonna be paying for resource officers. The commission allowed the sheriff's department to take that resource dollar and give everybody that nice raise. Stewart County, five percent cost of living increase. They also all got a four thousand dollar bonus, four thousand dollars last year from the pandemic dollars. Henderson County, this is a year after the lawsuit, we've heard about the lawsuit. A dollar fifty to the sheriff, everybody under the sheriff and everybody at the jail got a dollar fifty. Lake County, Hardeman County, Perry County, this is three economically distressed counties. This is three counties with a smaller economy than we got, two in West Tennessee and one on the other side of the river. Lake County give a three percent cost of living increase and a five hundred dollar, not a bonus, a raise. It's gonna recur next year. Hardeman County, three percent cost of living increase, Perry County, two point eight percent. I've yet to find another county that didn't give a cost of living increase. In Tennessee, a living wage for one person, and this information comes from WKRN News Two, their calculator, one person is thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Benton County's got twenty of its thirty-six salary workers making less than that. I want everybody to leave here and feel like more needs to be done. I want everybody to make these Benton County jobs have the desire to make them good jobs. Let's don't make these Benton County jobs bad jobs. Chairman, you're very likely to run for, uh, chairmanship again next month. I hope that you take an interest in what I've just said, and you piece together your next budget committee. You'll take in consideration of what's being talked about. I'm gonna stop there. I'm gonna give the floor.
Any questions?
Sure.
You're recognized.
Did you have any, what the totals are, how they were now, maybe they were behind and they called back up? Did you, did you, have you got any, any scales on what the rates? I know you're saying three percent, five percent, seven percent, what were they at before the rate?
I got everything I wanted, Dwayne. Let's see.
I mean, maybe they're like the Perry County, Perry County always a little.
Let me ask you a question. Does anybody in this room remember the last raise we gave? I remember two bonuses, longevity bonuses. I remember the step-up language changing, but I've been a commissioner since two thousand and fourteen. And, Darrell, you have two. Do you remember a raise that we gave? You don't? Chairman, I'm gonna give the floor. Thanks, everybody, for listening.
I will say one thing to that, Rocky. Y'all passed two years ago, I think, a step raise for all employees to get, to get a two thousand dollar raise after year one, year three, year five, and every five years after that. So you have to figure that in also.
Thank you for reminding me.
Next.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. What I was gonna talk to you about tonight is some property that, uh, is gonna be coming up on our agenda later on tonight. And since it come up to us last week.
And since it come up to us last week in property, I've been doing a lot of thinking about it. A lot of little soul searching, I guess some people can say is, you know, is, why am I really against this piece of property? Is it because me and my neighbor who owns the property aren't very neighborly? No, that ain't the reason. If it was, it would not be a good reason for me to be a commissioner. Because my job as a commissioner is to look out for the citizens of this county and hopefully use my knowledge in the real estate business for the last thirty-seven years or so to help us make better decisions when we're purchasing property. Let's face it, we have not been the best investors in property. In fact, if you go slide two, Scott, how many of you commissioners have went out to 641 and looked at this piece of property that they're wanting to spend $300,000 or $270,000 for? I've got four, five. How many of you actually got out of your car and bought that piece of property? One, two, three, four, five, okay? If you'll go to slide, the next slide please, is a topo map. One of the reasons I'm against this property is because it don't lay good enough for development. This property has been on the market for two to three years. It's here tonight to be sold, so that means nobody else has tried it. And if you'll look, there is a thirty-foot elevation drop on the property. If you'll look up there in this little corner, don't really, oh, right, don't think see it. That little circle right up there, somewhere right in there, on down, down by the pond, on the other side. Okay, right up in there, at the very front of the property, in the left, right there. That's the highest point on that piece of property. From there on, it slopes down, a thirty-foot slope in all directions. All right? There's not enough dirt on that property to fill it.
Hey, let me ask you a question.
Wait just a second, I'll get done. The next thing is a, that blue line, is that's a blue line stream, which means that we can't touch that stream. It's got to have a sixty-foot buffer along that stream line to ever be able to do anything with it. But the elevation, I went and met with some surveyors and engineers and asked them, you know, anything can be moved. Hey, they put a bucket on top of them out. They'll knock it down, not a problem, but there's a lot more dirt about it. There's a pond that's got to be done something with, and it's just don't lay suitable, and next screen please. And there is a creek. One person said they didn't see a creek on it. Right there's the creek on the left, and then under that, that culvert comes underneath the road. At the very top of that, you'll see it's about twenty foot up to the highway where that water and the drainage comes down and then feeds in. Next slide please. There's the creek again, a blue line creek, that you got to have permits and stuff to do anything with. The picture to the right is all the drainage and all, you see how clear it is from all the flooding that occurred during the recent rains that we've had, all down in that area. That is between our property and this particular piece of property. We own property already at the interstate. Next screen please. That joins us. There's your property that you're trying to mark. There's 25 acres right there. It hasn't even been bush-hogged, it ain't been touched. In order to try to get somebody to come here and look at our properties, you've got to make it look good. You know, you ain't going to try to sell your house where the gutters falling off, the forks falling off, the carpets smelling like cats, or whatever the case may be. We need to develop what we already have, not buy more property in hoes. I would like to see us take the money that we want to buy property with and use to clean up what we got. Next slide please. That's just a dirt spot, you see the highway on the back further to it? Next. This is the back of our property, not even the back. Just what you see clear, then you go into this, another nice, big leveled area back there. We need to clean up what we've got. We need to level it, we need to develop it, we need to put gravel down, what we don't use, gravel, we need to sew it down and make it presentable. I met with Ms. Wheatley earlier today, and I asked her, how many people in Benton County has came to Benton County and looked at property? She said somewhere between ten, fifteen. I asked her, how many people has looked at that piece of property? The answer was zero. They haven't showed it to us. They've showed us the Dunbar property, at the industrial park, and the Smith property. Next slide please. Why do we, they think we need this piece of property? To add it to what we've got, to make it have fifty acres? Next slide. That's not necessarily a clue to prove to get into it. Luckily, we got gentleman's moves of Benton County, he ain't getting fifty acres where he's been planning moving to. Palmer Tool sits on 13.7 acres. Deer Craft, fourteen. Joan Flax, at twenty-two. It goes on. They're all smaller tracts of property. Next please. If you'll look in Carroll County, Grange is where Mr. Douglas works. As big as that is, hard as five hundred something people, they're sitting on 38 acres. Dana Corporation sits on 37 acres. Folks, I just feel like that that piece of property does not lay good enough for us to invest our money. Let's take what we got, let's level it up, let's clear it out, where you can see from one end to the other. Let's gravel it, let's put a sign, next please. Decatur County, they even got a sign on their property. Now, their bush-hog ain't no better than ours, but they at least have a sign on their industrial park, they got a road going into it, and they got a site leveled up and ready to do. Right across the interstate, from, before you get to that one, is 182 acres, if you like, in Decatur County. Now, I know Decatur counties cannot get electricity because they need for industry. Guess what? We're in the same boat. We don't have it neither for major industry. But that's my concern about the property, you know, is the fact that it just don't lay good enough to invest in.
Do we have any other commissioner that would like to speak now? Commissioner Price?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank y'all. I want to briefly talk, I want to briefly talk about the budget graph, the final graph that we had, that we all got a copy of, and we all have to look at, and went into the state. And it's my understanding that has been approved. Is that correct, Mr. Milton? Okay. So that's been approved. One of the things that we talked about in one of our meetings was on page forty-seven, under senior citizens assistance, down at the bottom. And I know we're trying to do away with the 599, 499 line items. The auditors don't like that. Well, one of the, one of the things we talked about was, if you go back and look at that, the request for 2020, let me back up, the budget for 2023 called for $5,000. It says estimated 2023 was $10,391. And the department request for 2024 was $10,000, and allocated and approved was only $1,000. There was some discussion, if you remember, we discussed, what are we going to do to make up the difference for the seniors? And I hope most of you remember what that discussion was, and that will fix it once the budget's approved for 2024. Does anybody remember that? Yes? Okay, thank you. So I guess my question is, what is the way forward to help the senior citizens get the assistance and that money put in a line item? I know we, we don't want to use the 599, but I was going to ask Commissioner Milton if he could help me out. What, what can we do?
As a third to your last briefing, at $800 in that line item is still there with one outstanding big, I don't know what that deal was. But that is sufficient to get them through this month, next month. Now that the budget has been approved, we had asked them to bring us specific things that they need, not just a general heading of, bingo prizes doesn't tell us a whole lot. We don't send maintenance out in just about two months. We need no quad tools, we're going to be buying. We need, we need more specificity as to what they're needing. And then we can work with the line items to place some money in the line items. There wasn't enough, they didn't have enough time to do this before the budget was done. And they had enough money to get started. And now as we're starting, we have a couple of budgets, we can move forward and find things that they need and then get them in the right, I don't want to say get rid of, but reduce the use of that.
I'm going to ask, anyone, you folks have some questions?
Well, I just forgot a list. I'm going to add mine, mine's too, I would have to, I see it up there. I've got one property in the office.
I haven't, I haven't seen them, any lists of line items. But we need, we need to know also what, what you're specifically looking forward to purchase within those nine items.
Phil, were you saying you didn't know if they're buying two bowls or three actins?
Yeah, well, you need to be a little more specific. I mean, you're spending $10,000 just out of miscellaneous, and you don't have any specific that you're purchasing. Comptrollers, when they come in, they don't like that.
They need to have a specific.
We need to have some.
This month, if everyone knew that we're going to go buy.
Or they're going to, or they're going to have to go to the system where if they're buying bingo prizes, they're going to have to keep a list of who wins what, or list of who has received what. Six of the auditors, if you look at them, say, okay, this one here, this one here, this one here. But that's, that's obviously hard. I wouldn't want to get into that. But, okay, but these, okay, this is enough information that we can get line items for. These are not necessarily line items. Tablecloth and plastic foam, check with the following, we can like them. Line items for that and stuff.
I just want to make sure this doesn't fall through the cracks. I think y'all know after my talk last time about our senior citizens, I am one of them. I know I don't look like it, but I am one of them. I've been here during my journey. I learned a lot from my elders as I went through life. So let's get them what they need.
Mr. Phil's been talking about that with me. We've been planning on, you couldn't do anything until the budget was approved through the comptroller's office. So we'll, we'll have it next month.
All right, thank you. I yield the floor.
Any other commissioner? I was going to move on to number five on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Need a motion and a second? We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Next.
I apologize, ma'am, but you should know that we've got a standing script, we need to vote on our tablets.
Okay. That's okay. So now you can vote on your tablet for that, for the approval of the minutes.
What's the question?
Approval of the minutes from last month? Okay.
Eighteen yes.
Now we'll move to number six, which is the report of the public utilities. And a motion and a second? Okay. Can you put that in, the rope on?
Yeah, I do apologize for that.
That's okay.
It's now voice voting.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the approval of the public utilities. So all in favor, say aye. We're down to the resolutions, but I think we're going to take about a 10-minute break. Okay, we are at number seven on the agenda, which is Resolution One. It's a resolution by Benton County Mayor Ward to request the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee to preserve the fundamental right of Tennessee to keep and bear arms. Need a motion and a second? I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Arnold. Any discussion?
Thank you again, Chairman. I could have easily supported this resolution as I did a resolution like this similar a few years back under the Lashley administration. But then I read the mayor's office press release on this subject. The release mentions red flag style laws. Words such as unconstitutional violates our rights, looming special sessions, and this I didn't know a whole lot about. So I just looked a little further. This information I'm going to share with you comes from News Channel Five in Nashville somewhere around April. Governor Bill Lee's statements about red flag style laws. The law that he's interested in, that he is discussing with the state lawmakers, a temporary mental health order of protection that ensures mentally ill and those in crisis do not have access to firearms. This comes after the Covenant School shooting in the Green Hills community where six students were killed. Governor Lee explains in this news article, explains this should be done in a way that requires a high burden of proof, supports law enforcement, and punishes false reporting. I'm going to say it again, punishes false reporting. Temporary mental health order of protection. An individual in question will be notified and given the opportunity to stand before a judge. Governor Lee's own words about red flag. These words are nothing but a toxic political label meant to draw lines in the sand so nothing gets done. I'm going to send my own message to Governor Lee, and it is that I support his efforts in search for an answer in slowdown gun violence. Chairman, thank you for this moment. I yield the floor.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, since there are none.
I just want to say that I support the Second Amendment 100%. And I don't agree that Governor Lee can sit up there and make laws to try to take guns away from the law-abiding citizens. If you say take all the guns away, then we're not going to have anything but evidence because criminals are going to be the only ones that have them. And I just, I don't go along with any governor or anybody else that tries to take away our Second Amendment right to bear arms.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, since there are none, everyone please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 18 yes or no.
Resolution Two is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appoint Justin Hargrove to Benton County Industrial Development Board to fill the remainder of an unexpired term. Have a motion and a second? Anyone have any questions or discussion? That's the are none, so please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 18 yes.
Resolution Three is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appoint Jack Leonard to serve a three-year term on the Benton County Library Board. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? Are none, so please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 18 yes.
Resolution Four is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appoint Charlotte Oxford to the Benton County Office on Aging and Senior Center Board to fill a four-year term. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? Please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 18 yes.
Resolution Five is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appoint Doris Jo Arnold to the Benton County Office on Aging and Senior Center Board to fill a four-year term. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions? There are none, so please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 18 yes, one no.
Resolution Six is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appoint Lisa Wright Flowers to the Benton County Office on Aging/Senior Center Board to fill a four-year term. Any questions? Are none, so please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 18 yes.
Resolution Seven is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Ward to seek authorization from the county commission to enter to a lease agreement with Ballon Machine &amp; Tool for a property in the Benton County industrial park. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so everyone please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 18 yes, one no.
Resolution Eight is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $3,801.78 received from insurance on a 2015 Ford Explorer to the proper expenditure line item. I have a second motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Anyone have a question? I don't know that answer because I don't go there.
That's just wrong.
Let me take a break so you can start even. Okay, we have no discussion or questions, so. On Resolution Eight, so everyone please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 18 yes.
Resolution Nine is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $98.34 received as interest on the Ona Florence Trust CD to the proper expenditure line item. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Are no questions, so everyone please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 18 yes.
Resolution Ten is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $1,200 received from courtroom security fees to the proper expenditure line items within the sheriff's budget in order to fund required training for the bailiffs' court security. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Stokes.
Chairman, we have your motion to amend it?
Yeah. On this one, we do have an amendment. Does everyone have a copy of the amendment from Charlie? Okay, what we need is someone to make the motion for the amendments on this resolution. Okay. Okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Miller. That's okay. I didn't look your way. I'm sorry.
I would like to say something. All that is, is adding the last part of the line items. The last three digits was left off on the original. It's just adding the right line items, the last three digits of both of them. It's nothing different with the money.
Just a correction there. Okay, all in favor of the amendment? Please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Okay, now we will vote on the resolution as it has been amended.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, got it. Okay, now you're voting for the resolution as amended.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 18 yes.
Resolution Eleven is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $5,350 received from the City of Camden to the library's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions? Are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries 18 yes. Resolution 12 is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds received as a reimbursement for the out-of-state transport of incarcerated individual to the proper expenditure line item to replace expended funds. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions? Are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries 18 yes. Resolution 13 is a resolution by County Mayor Mark Ward to authorize Benton County to participate in the 24th Judicial District Recovery Court allocation of funds received from opioid abating funds. I have a motion.
I have a motion too. Yeah, we have an amendment on that.
Okay. We need a motion and a second to make an amendment to Resolution 13. Okay. Okay. Did everyone get a copy of the amendment?
This was just a typographical, just a little mistake. We had 22,250 and it needs to be amended to what he requested was 22,290. It was $40 off of what he had requested on the email.
Okay, everyone please vote for the amendment. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries 16 yes, a no. Now we will vote on the resolution as it was amended. Okay, now we're voting as it was amended. Anyone wish to change your vote? 11 yes, 7 no. You're very moved on that. That one did pass. Resolution 14 is a resolution sponsored by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to seek the commission's approval to negotiate and purchase a property consisting of approximately 30 acres on behalf of Benton County. Need a motion and a second to bring that to the floor. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Kenningston. The mayor would like to recognize Ms. Jennifer Whitley and Mr. Scott Owens. If you wouldn't mind coming forth, please.
Hi again. Can't possibly bring anything as fun as before, but we'll talk about some more industrial property. I've got to move. There we go. We can go on to the next one, Scott. Okay. I want to start out by telling you that 1,800 people leave Benton County every day at the show. And that number is my absolute driving force. And if we dropped that to 1,750 in the next year because of Mr. Couples, then good for us. That makes me really, really happy. I'm also really proud to tell you that the Industrial Development Board, the city, the county, the chamber, we work together. We are an incredibly unified team. And Mr. Couples, I was not employed when he first started looking here. He went to the chamber. And the very first day I worked at this job, we had a meeting with Mr. Couples. And that has been a year and a half. Our chamber is important and I appreciate how much you support it. They are part of the team that helps bring industry. We can go ahead, Scott. This is the Rankin property and that kind of brown line up the middle is 641. And it's about 33 acres. And the Industrial Development Board, for those of you who never met with us or come out and talked to us, they are incredible and they take their jobs very seriously. And when this property became available, they discussed it and discussed it some more and decided that, given the amount of money we thought we could get our hands on, they would prefer to begin an effort toward the interstate to expand what we have there as opposed to the Dunbarren property. As you may all know, the mayor put $225,000 in the budget for us to purchase the Dunbarren property. I'm negotiating an option with them right now so that we hang on to the capacity to keep about 25 or 30 acres at the industrial park and also begin this expansion. You can go to the next one. This is the property that the industrial board already owns on 641 and they join one another. So that puts me at the interstate and having roughly a 50-acre parcel as opposed to a 25-acre parcel. I would say maybe I've gotten 75 requests for information since I've been in my job, which is affordable from the state or the TVA saying, here, this is looking, what can you do in response to it? And the acreage is coming up all the time. Now, Keith's absolutely right. You've got Dana sitting on 37 acres. And this is a new model of economic development. They want more property. They also want more electricity. I'm sure Scott is very tired of me bringing options to him. I bet I call him twice a week. But last week, we had somebody ask if we could get 24 megawatts of power. That's a lot of power and that's going to be a TVA direct serve customer. But the wattage that they want is coming up, the land they want is coming up, it's changing a little. We'll go on to the next one, Scott. This is the Wally Mo property. And as you can see, if you were to join Rankin, IBB, and we don't have this Wally Mo property, I'm just telling you it's there. It's the next place that this property would run. And the reason I think my board endorsed us making this purchase is that so much of it sits on 641 and that would leave me options for commercial endeavors on the 641 side. And then if we were to come in on the backside a little bit, we could do logistics, warehousing, and life manufacturing. Scott's in the process of taking three things up there right now because of Mr. Tally's powder coating company. And we've got water and wastewater as part of an approved grant through the Benton Decatur Sewer District and there's some gas there. So we are not without utilities. Is it perfect? No, of course it's not. No piece of property is ever going to be perfect. My reason for asking is not that it's perfect, and I've got to tell you, Keith came and talked to me and we're going to be friends tomorrow just like we were today. I am afraid that Ford's never going to happen again and I can't do my best for you. Attempting to sell out of an empty wagon. Now is the time for us to have as much inventory as we can. And Keith's right, I wish I could bush hog and gravel and I wish everything we touch was absolutely perfect looking. We're getting there. We are working toward, we got $100,000 in due diligence money to work on the Smith property. We just keep asking. We are working our way through the TVA investment program. We ask and ask every source we can find and every piece of industrial property we have looked at. I want to double the available size of the lot. I want to have a flexibility of use there so that whatever comes my way, I have Smith, I have a little bit left at the industrial park and now I would have a more respectable sized lot at the interstate. I'm ready, Scott. We, I know money will come up. We intend, with your permission, to take the $225,000 that was budgeted towards Dunbarren, spend that, spend some of the Lockhart money and not have any new funds to purchase. That puts us able to buy a $300,000 piece of property with money that was kind of sort of coming our way anyway. We just have redirected it, because this is now available, to something we think we need more than we need to button up Dunbarren. Because Dunbarren, right now, isn't going anywhere and they were very open to a sale and I think they're going to be open to an option. I'm ready. I talked about we've got some electricity, the gas is there, the water and the wastewater are coming. It strikes me as a flexible option for me to keep working for you. And that's what I'm looking for and that's why my board wants this property and it's why we're asking for you to vote for this resolution tonight. I'll answer any questions I can or I'll get out of my... Yes, sir.
We talked earlier today, the picture you're showing right there is down on the driveway coming in. They're only selling approximately 28 acres in the corner, the building just up there.
Approximately 30.5 acres after we cut off the building.
30 acres total there already?
There's 33 and a half, or 33 and 3/4 acres. He's keeping his shop and part of it, but what we'll be purchasing is about 30.5.
Well, that's where you go in and there's a big drop and that's below the 641 and quite a bit. When I talked to you earlier today, we talked about, you know, showing property that actually looks as good as it possibly could and we discussed the fact that you have not shown the county's 20 acres, but most of the times you're showing the Dunbarren.
I showed the industrial park, not just Dunbarren.
Well, you said today that, you know, most of what you've shown was Dunbarren.
And Smiths.
And then Smiths.
Yes, sir.
So if that's, if we haven't even shown our 25 acres yet, but the group that's there is always growing up and any kind of sign is done. So I mean, if it looks good and, you know, more desirable when they drive through and see it, maybe something they need to be more willing to purchase and even show. I mean, if you go out here and try to sell, you know, person, show them sounds there ain't going to work.
I would like to say something. Keith, hey.
If we want to spend money and get more, you've got $100,000, you're going to spend that Smith property. Why don't we exercise our option and use the $300,000 for development and then Smith property? That's where you're getting the most of the...
I'm holding the Smith property for further SDG money because I've got the commissioner coming tomorrow morning to talk about Smith exclusivity. So I'm trying to divert TVA and SDG money towards Smith because it qualifies in a way that neither 25 nor 50 at the interstate would. I try to use my money wherever I'm most likely to get it for which project.
So while we're in the process of everybody supposedly coming to Benton County or coming to West Tennessee, why don't we try to put somebody where we can put, you know, instead of holding a piece of property, go ahead and get it, develop it, and do the best we can to get somebody in there. Because, you know, I don't think we're going to get Ford or wish we could. We're going to get smaller, taller guys, manufacturer type companies that can go on the 25 acres and then take our additional money to make it something suitable to be shown. You know, because the industrial board did break through Biden, right?
No, property comes to us all the time.
So, you know, why don't we go in and invest and walk with the guy? You know, make something look good to the guy instead of just looks like it, you know, just throw it out there and run that, that's what the guy, you can't say it. There are 25 acres out here, you can't, you know, that's...
Keith, I'm going to recognize the mayor right now.
You make a good point and I appreciate you doing that, Keith. He's exactly right on that point. The 25 acres is great and we can market that. It does need bush hogged somewhat. It's been bush hogged within the last eight months, kind of like we try to do it once a year. If you think we should bush hog it more, we'll have to talk to budget and double that line item. Just like in the industrial park, we bush hog it once a year. If y'all want to start doing that twice a year, we'll have to get some money from the ending fund balance or something. But the point you made on that 25 acres is exactly what I was trying to say to you when you come to talk to me about it. If we double the size of that lot to 55 acres, you've got the... Could you run to the one that shows all of the lots together, the picture?
It's probably back two, Scott. One more back. There we go.
Well, actually, is there one that shows all three of them? Yeah, right here, that's good. If you double the size and make that 55 acres, then all these RFIs that Jennifer's getting every week that's needing 50 acres, that's going to touch on that. Or is any company going to use the whole 55 acres? Well, it's not feasible to do that there. But are we going to get a company that's needing 15 acres? Or are we going to get two companies that's needing 15 or 20 acres? Yeah, and that lot's perfect for that. You don't have to mess with the ditch that drains off of 641. You don't have to mess with any of that. You've got two big lots, that soybean field's got so much field that needs to be cut down that the dirt's already there. We don't have to spend that, and I understand what you're saying, it'd be good to make it look perfect. We don't have to spend all that money to do that. The companies that are looking for this land, they're going to do that. They already have that in their site development when they're looking because all of West Tennessee, just about until you get over to Memphis, is rolling. I was just up there today looking at it and on the way home, I was just kind of looking at all the fields on each side of the road. And, you know, they had to cut down all those hills to run 641 through there. It's just that way all the way home. So if we're going to market something, I think that's perfect because we have 641, we have the interstate. Gossett Road, I don't know if any of y'all have been up there to look at it, Gossett Road, Bucks out there widening it right now and straightening it. It's amazing. So we have Wally Mo that has sold a few weeks ago. The new company I've met with, they're going to triple the size of the manufacturing at Wally Mo. That's one of the reasons we needed that road to be widened. Go right around the corner, we got a powder coat company has already built, one of their buildings, they're in the process of building another one. This is the prime spot for Benton County. The reason it's the prime spot is because we have water and sewer coming this year. We've already got the grants approved. We've got electricity. Scott, would you stand up and say a little about what kind of electricity we do have there on Gossett Road now?
I may have to say, I can't speak to the land, but I can speak to electricity and what we have down there. As far as the engineering and modeling that area of the county, there's about one to two megawatts existing capacity that's there. Let me put that in terms that y'all can understand. According to Fisher Arnold, you're talking Jones Plastic or smaller one. But you move into like lot, warehousing, retail, small commercial, medium commercial, that all factors in. So you've got some flexibility there to get started. The other side that you could do, according to the engineering company, for more capacity there as you grow or as you develop, we could pull a new line from Holiday again and dedicate it for that, for that new service. I have been asked to look at the possibility, you know, I'm so thankful we have that Holiday substation, but it's in the wrong spot. Brett can attest to this too. It's in the wrong spot. It needs to be in the middle of the county for the best use. Unfortunately, as of right now with TVA, you don't build a substation unless there's a need. So you've got to create the demand before you can have a substation. The other caveat is you've got to have the path to get from transmission all the way to that substation. So we have to use what we've got. There is some capacity there. It's limited, but like I said, it could do one Jones Plastic or less, which is pretty much heavy manufacturing. Or you get into light warehouse, distribution, the type of stuff that's going to be at the interstate, small retail, small commercial. You could have some medium commercial, you might have a hotel or something like that, but we're monitoring that because just like with Tally picking up, he's... But we're monitoring that because just like Mattelli picking up, um, he's actually already paid us. He's talking about Gossett Road, we're putting three thirty-six wire down Gossett Road, which is a heavier conductor and actually going under the interstate to reach his business. He's already paid us for that. Uh, which will give us a path on the other side of the interstate. We actually put uh, a larger conduit going under the interstate. I've talked with the state and they said as long as we stay out of the interchange, we're going on the interstate as much as we need to. So we've got some opportunity down there for some properties on the other side, but we've got to use what we've got out of the Holiday substation first before we can do anything different. So it's flexible and there are some options. Um, but we need to stay Surgram Road south. That's how we can do that.
Where, where is the Holiday substation located?
It is, when you go around the curve in Holiday, go past the bottoms, uh, Old Union Church Road. You turn down there and you'll see all three lines going down that road.
Old Union Church, you heard. It's a fairly used place.
It's the last one we built, if I remember correctly. The last one, we did Big Sandy and then Holiday was the last one. It's just it got put there out of necessity and we needed it at the time, but it's just not the right location. It's just kinda set off to the side. But we can use it and expand it to its capacity and then we can go from there for that one board. But there is options there as the need, as the demand is needed. And you're not gonna put a Granger's at the interstate. And I, I just wanna speak to, I've talked a lot about the Smith property. There is so much acreage there. When you get above, I mean, you're in twenty megawatts of power. And I mean, our whole county only uses fifty megawatts of power. At the hottest day, fifty-four megawatts at the hottest day of the summer. So when you have these RFIs come in and they're on twenty, thirty, forty, fifty megawatts of power, you're talking the entire Benton County service territory. And so the only place you're gonna get that type of power is locate by TBA transmission site. Not the second set that runs down through here, that's kinda like their big five hundred KV lines, that's like their interstate to connect everybody. But it is the, the smaller one sixty-one transmission lines. So that's where those sites are gonna have to locate to get that type of power. And so usually those companies, like Jennifer's been saying, she hits me up two or three times a week on property and RFIs. Just like I, like I agree with Keith on, you may have a business that requests fifty acres at the end of using fourteen. Well, that's part of the negotiation process is how much you're gonna let them have or let them utilize. But we can't even answer if we don't have something adequate to respond to the RFI. You have anything that comes across the desk and says, hey, I need twenty megawatts of power, they're going somewhere close to TBA transmission line. The only option we've got on that right now is the Smith property. And really the size of lot out at the industrial park is so limited, even at twenty-five, you know, uh, for what they're needing. For that size of power, it's a pretty big footprint, so.
What you're saying is the Smith property, the better location for bigger, um, so if we went on a bigger employer, would you be looking to spend your money on a Smith property?
I, I disagree because whatever size company's gonna land on that four hundred acres, there's a ton of development that needs to be done at that Smith property. Um, to even, to clear it or even get a potential site. The companies that would come in with that type of higher net, higher requirements or demand, they're anticipating they're gonna have to do a lot of work. You know, like Granger's is gonna walk in and they're gonna have to do a lot of development on the site period, just like a, I'm not gonna say we'd get a Blue Oval, but something with substantial power requirements. I, I, I said as an ex officiano on the industrial uh, development board, I will say they're doing their due diligence on the Smith property. I think their biggest challenge is it's such a, a large set of acres, they found out if it can have rail, they found out what the power requirements, water requirements, all those pieces. And they've got a good option to market. But I would, my personal recommend, I wouldn't recommend just the way the land is there, dividing it up and chopping it up in all pieces, just too much development work there. It needs to be one large organization. Jennifer just said, if you didn't hear, a hundred and sixty-seven acres just to get started, uh, to develop that and clear it and get it ready. So I applaud them for doing their due diligence on what they're doing and working their plan and it's a great option in their portfolio. But I do see the RFIs coming back and forth and I'm not gonna get into discussion on land or how y'all develop it. But it is a good opportunity with fifty acres to have multi-use flexible and we've got capacity there to grow. And Jennifer could speak to you a little more of what she's hearing from, you know, everybody's all hand clapping and cheering on Florida Blue Oval. Um, but there's different requirements they have for all the different things that they're needing. And she can speak to that, but if you're having questions on power, I'd have to answer it.
Thank, thank you sir. I, I would like to say that Scott with the electric company, Jennifer, it, they're, they're amazing. The industrial board, we have an amazing team representing Benton County right now. We're living in times that we've never seen before with companies wanting to come to West Tennessee. I just request that y'all vote to get this land, to give Jennifer something to work with and give me something to work with to be able to recruit some industry to come here. Am I against the five hundred acre site? By no means. It's eleven million dollars to get a rail spur. It's gonna be five or six million dollars to get electricity there. We're, we're talking about a twenty million dollar project that we'll have to have a lot of help from grants and state. You're, you're looking at five to ten years down the road to get that, that going. So it is a viable option. And if a big company that needs that kind of property wants to come in here, they're gonna have to, to foot that bill to, to get what they need there. But we do have option on it so we can continue to show it. But as far as these people that are sending RFIs, wanting to send in these warehousing companies and shipping companies that's gonna be supplying the Blue Oval, I just beg y'all, vote for this so we can catch a couple of them before the window closes. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Stokes.
Okay, so I just have to ask, Keith asked earlier if anyone had been out through this property and involved in the Blue Oval. My question is, just while we're on this topic, and maybe y'all have been out there to see what the highway work with Buck's leadership and the electric company have done, they have been working cooperative to support this one new industry that is on the other side of the interstate. I mean, that's while still maintaining all the other roads and all the other electric lines and services in our county. So huge thank you for that, for real.
I agree.
This property has, well, we have the twenty-five acres plus potentially the third. I mean, Keith was talking about the number of acres that was used by, you know, uh, some of our local or, or industries that are in counties that are near us. Well, this right here would support two, three of those potentially. I understand we have some love places out there. I understand we have some, some like ground. You can't get out here and walk around the courthouse very long without finding some, some valleys. We're covered by the jail. You have the jail built over there, it's, it's kinda, it's, 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 there's all the hollers and windows screens down there in that area. They're everywhere here. But this is situated in an excellent spot. I mean, it does, it gives us variety. Still have this property, I believe this weekly, she tells us she's working on options. I believe she'll see that through. But this gives us some variety right there at our main hard reasons. Six forty-one, high forty.
Um, Mr. Fowler, did you wanna speak?
Yeah, you know, talk about those hills and valleys. Look what they done with Dollar General and shut them here on Main Street. But as far as the thing that, we could do, I think Mr. Dacus has got the beans on there. How come we couldn't get some of our tax rate money back and let him look at our property there? So it'd be either him or Brian Inman or Mr. Rainwater for that twenty-five acres, you put beans on it. Who doesn't love seeing coming down, clearly to buy something, man? Like he says, they pretty sound, says, hey, industrial property area in Midtown, when people beans run across it.
I agree.
I mean, it, it's simple, I don't rather make money off of, you know, metal lease or taxes or whatnot, it's to make money. But, you know, give the taxpayers.
In the meantime.
I mean.
You can put eight acres, we'll leave it.
Do what now?
You can put around eight acres, we'll leave it.
Money down in the hollers.
So I mean, eight point six four.
Right, just a little, you know, somebody, get somebody doing that.
You can put a hundred dollars out of three hundred thousand dollar investment, I guess it's, I think, hey, I think it's money. But that property of her, I think Jennifer said, Dunbar property, Smith property, we have option. Uh, this property that is for sale, has been for sale for several years. Uh, my question is, is there an option that people rank, do an option of purchase on this property for a month? As during the time of the sale, was any offer made of, why wouldn't sell it two years later?
Let me, let me just make sure we're all talking about, all on the same page here. I do not have a Dunbar option. I've asked for it.
The first one?
Yes. Two fourteen.
Two fourteen, and that's the one you showed them on?
Um, the industrial park and Smith are that happening.
So you're showing that one seven, eight times, or like the third of them, so you're showing it to voters, why not ask for an option that you're showing them over? You don't have an option on you. So if we spend your money up there, you can have the money to buy that down there?
The option for Dunbar, I think I can get and we do have an option on Smith. But I just wanted to, I just didn't want you to think I have an option on Dunbar yet. I've asked for it.
But you did show the industrial park, right?
Yes, probably sixty percent and forty percent Smith. Probably the way it works out.
And you hadn't showed the interstate none?
No.
So why ask for others where we got there, why, out of Dunbar's property, that we, that we didn't show?
Because I can.
Uh, I think that we've already explained that Keith, you can keep walking around it, but it's, it's already eight o'clock. I, I think. I, I mean, you can keep on arguing about it, but the fact, the fact is, the property is something that she's just giving you the reason why the industrial board and the economic development director, the mayor, I think everybody that looks at it sees that that's what we need. You keep saying she hadn't shown that up there, it's only twenty-five acres and most of that we wanna keep for commercial. So she needs more property to show up there to make it where she can answer her RFIs. You cannot answer an RFIs with twelve acres. Thank you Jennifer.
You're welcome. Can we have a call for a question? So we're going to vote on the resolution now, so if you're in favor, vote yes, if not, you vote no. Or you pass. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Okay, we'll move on to resolution number fifteen. Is a resolution, um, by the Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of sixty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars received from the J A G T N grant to various line items. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? All are none, so everyone vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Resolution sixteen is a resolution from Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of five thousand two hundred dollars received from miscellaneous refunds to the building improvements line item. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions? There are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Resolution seventeen is a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to move funds in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars within the school's budget to properly fund line item expenditures. Most, we have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions? Please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Resolution eighteen is a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars within the school budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. No questions, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Resolution nineteen is another resolution from Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to move funds in the amount of seventy-eight thousand and sixteen dollars within the school budget. Motion by Melton and a second by Stokes. Any questions? Alright, please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Resolution twenty is a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to appropriate funds in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars to the school's budget to fund supervisor salaries. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? Okay, are none, so please vote. You have a card? Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Resolution twenty-one is by Sheriff Ken Christopher to authorize Mayor Mark Ward to apply for a violent crime intervention grant for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four from the Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Programs and execute contracts and other documents as they may be needed. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Kennington. Any questions for the mayor or the sheriff? Okay, all are none, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Resolution twenty-two is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to add various new line item codes into the sheriff's budget in order to reduce reliance on line items four ninety-nine and five ninety-nine in co, in accordance with the comptroller's directives.
Table, table. The sheriff's pulled that one.
He did. Alright, then we'll move on to resolution twenty-three. Yes. We're at resolution twenty-three is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of one thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and sixteen cents received from various sources to various line items in the sheriff's budget for expenditures. We also have an amendment to that one to correct an error or to correct the, um, account codes. So I need a motion and a second for the amendment, which is Commissioner Price and Commissioner Stokes. Everyone got a copy? Mr. Hicks, you got a question? Okay, she cleared it all.
Oh, okay.
I was ahead of them, so I'm sorry. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Melton and Kennington for the amendment. Any questions about the amendment? There are none, so vote for the amendment, please. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Now we will vote for the resolution as it has just. Now we will vote for the resolution as it has just been amended.
Please vote.
Yes, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries as amended eighteen yes. Okay, resolution twenty-four is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to move funds in the amount of ninety-six thousand four hundred dollars within the sheriff's budget to cover a shortfall in the overtime pay for the jail. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions for the sheriff?
We have any of this.
Okay. What, do you have the amendment?
Yes, ma'am. Do you want to read it?
Yes, because I don't have it. Who's, who's making the motion for the amendment? Commissioner Stokes, okay, do you want to read your amendment?
Sure, we just reduced the line items. Well, we're having the transfers take place from the original to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, does, does any, do y'all have a copy of this correction? Does anyone want to see it? Where it says guards, that has been changed from ninety-six thousand four hundred dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars. And the overtime pay has been reduced down to five thousand five hundred dollars.
No, it's twenty-five thousand. That would just find out what's inside.
Okay. It looked like five thousand. So both line items have been changed to twenty-five thousand dollars. So if you're in favor of the amendment, everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes and no. Okay, we're voting on it as amended? Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries eighteen yes. Resolution number twenty-five has been pulled by the mayor. So we'll move on to resolution twenty-six. It's a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate funds in the amount of three hundred dollars to the animal control budget uniforms. Need a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Kennington. Any questions? Okay, everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries eighteen yes. Resolution twenty-five is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate funds in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars to fund mowing services at Patsy Klein Memorial. I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Melton and Stokes. I'm on. Do I have my own res- am I not on twenty-seven? Okay, that's resolution twenty-seven. Any questions? Okay, there are none, please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries eighteen yes. Resolution twenty-eight is sponsored by Mayor Mark Ward to transfer funds in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars for new water heaters in the Benton County Jail. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Kennington. You recognize?
Madam Chairman, uh, during our meeting of property, uh, we discussed this, uh, we didn't pass the property. But once I was talking to C Task yesterday, the mayor did acknowledge that we would not get bids on this. And according to C Task, since it's over ten thousand dollars, we gotta have bids. So we should prepare. I'd like to see us put it out for bids, just if we could get, uh, if we can get it.
May I speak?
Yes.
I'd like to see us go ahead and approve this and do it. I think it's, uh, Sheriff would consider an emergency. Uh, we can put it out for bids, but I don't think it's going to be anywhere close to what with the quality plumbing to do it force for. You can correct me if I'm wrong, sure.
I know, probably said we said you had planned that thing while I was talking to them, but they, they approached us. We didn't, I know we were starting a program, but the ones in the back always got what they call, uh-
Same price.
Oh, what's wrong?
Virtually the same price.
I know we need them, I mean, I was going with Boy C Task, he was legal for us to do it without being-
I checked with the Comptroller's Office to make sure, uh, when you're talking about hot water for prisoners, they, they do consider that an emergency if you've got four water heaters out.
Well, we did after.
So let me explain that a little bit. We ordered these heaters for, for what we're talking about. Quality got over there to replace them and the sheriff's office redirected them upstairs to the other pods that had just started leaking. But because they were upstairs and leaking, it was causing a whole lot more problems. So they had them redirected there and I'm just trying to get the ones that we originally, uh, bought and put in the right place. If y'all don't think it's an emergency and you want me to put it out for bids, it's fine. I'd be glad to do it, but that's up to y'all.
We do have hot water too today night. We don't have hot water in the kitchen area now, so we got to have it. We did give them the first ones, but they fixed it. Well, they didn't like that hot water for shower. But we got the water that's releasing now going to the kitchen area. You think you can do that? We can look back on, uh, on the minutes, the other days, that's when we first started. I brought up a year in class before that, I told them the, uh, hot water heaters were going out. And they looked at it, they wore work out. And, um, he come, he said all of them were going to be going out, so I just brought it up so we keep your heads up through the planning of the company. And it went out, started going out by that.
Didn't we talk about two of those hot water heaters that didn't make it that in your, uh, food, your H VAC system in there? As far as moisture and things of that nature?
Yeah, they were leaking in that same room where all the electronics that we're having so much trouble with, it's only seven years old, is giving us a problem, we're going to have to spend, how much is that for train?
What, are you talking about the Johnson controls?
Johnson controls is in that, but it's in that same room.
It's in the same room, right? Where the controllers are?
So I think the moisture from all those leaks is what's caused us to have to replace that system, so.
Any other?
I'd like to have a big order, but I'm not sure we're good.
You said it was an emergency? You said it was in the kitchen?
We can defend that.
But they were that big. They were an emergency.
Yeah. I can clearly imagine.
It, it was told me it was an emergency is the reason I made that decision. If they want to walk that back, I'm fine with walking it back and not doing it. What happens if the health inspector comes in? What happens if the health department inspects us now?
I want to get it fixed. That's the thing, I like, I like that big in my, uh, actually pretty handy, but I knew it would make the world right.
Commissioner Price?
Sure, we've been written those things. The state has come in, oh, they did, did they send you a letter to manage the state? He came down and looked at it, wanted to know why we changed the first one without contact. You know, he come in for an annual, and I couldn't place it. And he wanted to know why we didn't have hot water in the kitchen area. And I said it's having appropriated, might have appropriated fixed it. And he said, I'm sending the mayor a letter going right up for violation, I don't, I don't have the hot water for the kitchen.
So we, so we've been written up on it?
He said he was sending a letter to the mayor.
The reasons that, that those didn't get replaced when y'all voted on that, I think it was about six months ago, because it wasn't, it wasn't in September, October of last year, is because it was felt that the worst need was where the showers were. So they're all the same age, they've all got to be replaced.
All of them will have it.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, um, we will vote on this resolution? Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries eighteen yes. Is everyone okay? Does anybody need a break? Okay, we're going to take another ten-minute break, please. I think we are too. You sure did sponsor a lot of resolutions this month. Mr. Kennington causing trouble? Okay. We are on resolution twenty-nine, which is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate funds in the amount of ten thousand dollars for needed improvements to the solid waste recycling center. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? Okay, everyone please vote. Kenny Kennedy? Anyone wish to change their vote? Having trouble with the fifth district back there. Resolution thirty is by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate funds in the amount of three thousand fifty-two dollars seventy-nine cents for needed software maintenance for the Benton County Clerk's office. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions for Madam Clerk? There are none, so everyone please vote. Kenny Kennedy?
Yes.
Mike Henry?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Martin Carey, eighteen yes. Resolution thirty-one is a resolution by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to complete negotiations and enter into a contract for the sale of the building in the Benton County Industrial Park, known properly as the Tank Building, and corresponding property to the industrial prospect. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Kenny Kennedy?
Yes.
Mike Henry?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Martin Carey, eighteen yes. Next is the appointing of notaries, we have two. James Forsythe and Rebecca Lusk. In a motion, we have one by Commissioner Arnold and Commissioner Stokes. Everyone vote please on the notaries. Kenny Kennedy?
Yes.
Mike Henry?
Yes.
You all? Anyone wish to change their vote? Martin Carey, eighteen yes. Next is any other business. Now we have a resolution we need to take care of. Okay, Commissioner Stokes makes a motion to suspend the rules. Do I have a second? Commissioner Melton? Resolution thirty-two is a resolution by the Benton County Road Supervisor Barry Carter to budget funds in the amount of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents received from the state of Tennessee in state aid to the highway department's budget. On the what? Oh, we didn't do that? Okay. I, I voted it, no? I think I voted. Okay, now we're gonna vote to suspend rules. Kenny Kennedy?
Yes.
Mike Henry?
Yes.
Mike Henry? White? Anyone wish to change your vote? Is everything yes or no? Or suspension of rules?
No.
Okay. Now we will vote on Mr. Carter's resolution. Want me to read it again? Does everybody know what it is? Okay. All in favor of this resolution number thirty-two? Please vote. Kenny Kennedy?
Yes.
Mike Henry?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Martin Carey, eighteen yes. Okay, I have a couple announcements. The training that's required by the new commissioners, uh, the deadline for that is coming up. So if you haven't completed your training, you need to do that. I think, Mr. Price, do you know what the deadline date is? Thirty-first of August? So you need to take care of that.
If you wasn't a official last year, you need to, last election, you need to. It doesn't matter if you was twenty years ago.
Two thousand eighteen. After two thousand eighteen.
You may already done.
If you were elected after two thousand eighteen, you have to do it. And the other thing that, um, I wanted to bring up is the regional meetings. I had Charlie put a piece of paper in here, in your packets, about our regional meetings that we go to every September. There's several of you I know that's gone to Henry County. Well, they're not having it in Henry County this year. They're going to alternate between Henry County and Obine County. So we have a choice as commissioners to go to the regional meeting. We have a choice of Obine County or Madison County. Some of you will go, some of you won't go. Now, it doesn't really matter, you could go to either one you wanted to, but it, usually we go as a group because it's been in Henry County. So does anyone plan to go to this regional meeting? September the twenty-first is the Obine location, and that's at the Discovery Park. And if we choose to go to Madison County, that's not until October second. So, you know, I'm going, it don't matter where we go, which one we go to. I know Kenneth always goes and several people. Gary's been there, I know, and... So does anybody want to say? Madison? It's a little bit closer. And we don't have to choose, we don't have to choose or vote on anything, but I'm just letting you know that we have two locations. And they do want a head count for food, so... I'm just letting y'all be aware that the Obine meeting is September twenty-first, if you want to go to that one. So if we want to go together, I guess we can call each other and meet somewhere and however you want to do that. It doesn't really matter, I'm just letting you know about it. That's all I got to say. Yeah, the mayor wants to say, uh, one thing.
Do y'all want to discuss the sheriff's grant tonight? Or you want to wait until next meeting? Do we have time to wait? I've been calling you since Thursday, but I've never got a response. We've got to know if that grant can be extended in portions and if we get our money back, or if it all has to be completed by June thirtieth and then we get reimbursed.
You've been working on that ever since, like, that day.
For us to appropriate three hundred fifty or three hundred eighty thousand, there's no way possible to get that room built and the modifications are made for that machine going through your engineering, architect, and contractors by June thirtieth. If we could order the scanner and other portions that you have in there that's just ordering stuff, if we could order those, get them in, and get reimbursed for that money, we could forego that, uh, building and just do it on our own. You know what I'm saying?
Can we not just order?
Yes, you could do that, but here's the deal. If we don't receive it, we can't, we can't get reimbursed for it. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But is that it, all grants are different. I'm under the understanding, reading this grant, that it all has to be expended by June thirtieth and complete, and then you get reimbursed for all of it. I'm asking the question to you and your guys, I've been down there three times today. Is it a grant that you can do a portion of it and get reimbursed for it?
Been trying to give answers, like I said, to Barry. Just thought he wanted to get it filled. I called him, said we, uh, he said she hasn't had any answers. She said we left a lot of those. So far, I, I can't get any answers.
I, I'm a hundred percent for it, and I don't mind doing the paperwork. But if we're gonna pay for it and, and get it, if we order that two hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment and an eighty thousand dollar van, and then we can't get the other horse complete and we have to pay that back, that I don't want to get into that. So we've got to know that. When does the money have to be appropriated, Phil?
Money can be appropriated anytime. But the thing is, is we need to know how we're gonna get reimbursed.
Yeah.
If we can buy the machine, get it here, invoice them and get reimbursed by invoice, we're fine. You know, we can come up with that and, and get that done.
Thank you, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Hundred ninety-nine, we invested in the grant for the machine, but that may be including some of the other machines, yeah. But the problem is, is it, it's a total complete project by June thirtieth of next year. And you get reimbursed at one time the entire amount. I don't see any way we can get architects and engineers involved. Get it here and be able to complete.
So we, we've got to have clarity on that before we move forward on it?
Yeah, we need to. If you're gonna, if you're gonna build a room.
Just in the Sally Court, just places that into.
I don't, I don't think.
I might shift running. They have never got there.
Well, I'm talking to John the other night at the meeting. There wasn't enough room in the Sally Court just to build a room. That was gonna have to be extended.
The, the Sally Court is gonna have to be extended and room, but there, it's, it's the same fix that you want for the Sally Court anyway. It's gonna have to be scooted out of some, but to build a room there for this, there's not room for, everybody that I've talked to over there says there's not room for it.
I would put it inside. Where is that?
That's where the architect and engineer, I think, because you're gonna be moving, knocking out a wall and moving it out. I don't think that we can do that. We're at the jail without having, without having that done. And I don't know what the cost, the grant itself may require, with these modifications to the building may require that. I read the entire grant.
Only way we can put it inside is as a position, in one of the open cells there. We couldn't have, by all of the booking area. That thing had been laid out by, we had all kind of, but there's a big room, it's a pass on down there. Had two doors going into it, no locks on the inside, only one of them, a sink and open there. We just used it for the door room. I don't think it's hard to put it up to this screen. We just have to get the measurements on it.
That's with the dimensions.
Because that, that would, that would work if we could use that. And I just, I'll have to get the measurements, I have no idea. They want to see. I think Oxford County, Carroll County, yes, I think it's Oxford County, but it was set up, you had to pay. And I was just looking, I just got it in, but they didn't.
Are you sure it will fit through the door as well? You know, it's not too wide or probably. Probably, I would, I would hope that it would be easy.
So we can't bring anything up about that? Uh, we'll have to discuss it next week.
We can't do an appropriation.
Yeah, we'll have to discuss it at the next meeting.
It was, it was, she's been trying, she's done, worked all day, but nobody's called back. We never keep contact. So that's what was Allison, she said she was trying to get, and she was getting back. So you worked really hard on that grant, her and Phil worked on that together. They got a good job. Anything like they got done, I don't have a chance to move on.
Anything else? And do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?